We are going to go on to our 6.8915 AM item. What is it? Aratum? Aratum? Aratum, okay. A: Consideration of Priorities for Fiscal Year 2024 Community Project Funding. B: Consideration of Resolutions Confirming Lake County's Highest Priority Projects for Submittal of Fiscal Year 2024 Community Projects Funding, including: One, Big Valley Fish Habitat Improvement Groundwater Recharge Project; Two, Pre-Development Support for a Regional Center and Aquatic Community Swim Center; and Three, Regional Navigation Center Pre-Development Support; and Four, as added with our extra item, Consideration of the AEM Airborne Electromagnetic Survey of Lake County's Groundwater Basin Project as a Community Project Funding Priority. Okay, and, oh, the region, did I say the regional, national? Did I say the Navigation Center? Okay, thank you. All right, CIO Parker.
Thank you, Chair. Matthew Rothstein is here to introduce this item, as well as Stephen Carter is here to answer any questions you may have. We also have several guests that will be speaking on the projects they are most interested in the Board supporting.
Thank you, and good morning, Board. Matthew Rothstein, Deputy County Administrative Officer. On the afternoon of March 1st, 2023, the county was advised by Congressman Thompson community project funding would again be made available for fiscal year 2024. And you'll recall, in recent years, successful submittals for community project funding have been well-established, community-supported projects, including repurposing of the Lakeport Armory Facility as a permanent home for the Lake County Sheriff's Office and Emergency Operations Center, Facets of the Middle Creek Project, an update to the Full Circle Ethlament Pipeline Project, and the Kelseyville Sidewalk Safe Routes to School Project, which will provide sidewalks that separate children walking and biking to school from vehicular traffic. Members of Congress are limited to submitting 15 community project funding requests responsive to needs across the entirety of their districts. And you'll be aware, as a result of the latest redistricting process, Congressman Thompson now represents all of Lake County. Staff reached out to county department heads, and your Board, and partners from the cities of Clear Lake and Lakeport seeking input on projects that should be granted priority for submittal. As you will expect, not every significant area of countywide priority was a good fit for fiscal year 2024 community project funding. As described in the memo published with your Board's agenda and updated this morning, four projects are being put forth for your consideration today. Water Resources Leadership briefly introduced you to the Airborne Electromagnetic Survey item, and will further discuss that project soon. The Big Valley Habitat Improvement and Groundwater Recharge Project, which is a $1,185,000 request that seeks to improve riparian habitat, supporting the Clear Lake hitch population in consistency with your Board's recent emergency proclamation, is another of those. And if it pleases the Chair, I propose that those two particular projects be taken up, third and fourth, among those that we're looking at during this presentation. So, once we get to those items, our Water Resources Director Scott DeLeon and Deputy Director Marina Delagianis will be prepared to answer your Board's questions and speak to those specifically. Development of a Regional Navigation Center is another item on our list, which would provide for emergency sheltering and transitional housing and wraparound services for unhoused individuals in the greater Lakeport area. This particular request is seeking $1,950,000 for pre-development support. And also, in addition to City Manager Kevin Ingram and Assistant City Manager Nick Walker, Community Development Director Maria Turner is available in Zoom today to speak to that item. And I'm hoping that your Board will be open to discussing that second among these. And we also have City Managers Ingram and Alan Flora and Assistant City Manager Walker and Public Services Director Lars Ewing here to discuss the Recreation Center and Aquatic Community Swim Center Project. Before we go any further with that item, I have a very significant update. And as prepared for your Board's agenda, this was to be a $3.1 million request, which was seeking pre-development phase support only for the centers in Lakeport and Clear Lake. However, since the posting of your Board's agenda, county staff and City Manager Flora connected with Congressman Thompson's staff, and it became evident that there may be no significant downside to submitting a much larger request for this particular item, and one that includes funding for construction-related costs in addition to pre-development phase. Now, this year's community project funding cycle is expected to be highly competitive, and there's no guarantee that any of these projects will ultimately be funded, even if they are among the 15 Congressman Thompson puts forth for consideration. It's also true that with Congressman Thompson now representing all of Lake County, making our needs known, even if they carry considerable costs, is important. And Lake County residents comprise about 9% of the population of California's 4th Congressional District, and our county has had no greater champion at the federal level in recent years than Congressman Thompson. On Monday morning, city and county staff met and came to consensus it was in our jurisdiction's collective interest at this stage to put forth a $31.8 million request for the Recreation Center and Aquatic Community Swim Center Project. And this represents 75% of the anticipated capital costs associated with both centers. And so, I'm going to project now the resolution as amended, and portions that have been altered or highlighted so they can be easily identified by your Board and the public. Changes were fairly minor in terms of modifications of the language. So, as you have observed, the resolution has been revised to reflect the expansion of this request. And now, if it pleases your Board, I would like to invite comment on the Recreation Center and Aquatic Community Swim Center Project request from Director Ewing and from City Managers Flora and Ingram and Assistant City Manager Walker.
Hi, good morning, Lars Ewing, Public Services Director. Matthew, I appreciate the presentation. I didn't come with any lobbying of the project. This is a project that has been discussed and will be discussed later today as a part of a couple of other agenda items. Your Board is well aware of the efforts over the last few years to pursue Recreation Center and an Aquatic Center. There's been a variety of efforts done. Feasibility studies with architects. We've done preliminary polling. We've done survey results. It's been a progressive effort that I believe has a lot of good momentum and pointedly, and I believe is referenced in the resolution, has demonstrated a lot of public support. 95% of people saying they will visit it. 86% that I believe approved or supported a joint effort. Now, that's the great news. The challenging news is the dollar figures. And that's why we're here today with an opportunity to go for a much larger figure than we initially anticipated just last week. The pre-development support was what we had initially proposed, and the figure is about 10% of the overall construction cost. So, that gives a high-level overview, but recognizing that there are a lot of other needs. There's no beating around the bush that that's a big dollar figure, but it's a big project that has a big community impact. And I'd like to emphasize that. So, I appreciate the people that are here from both cities. There's a lot more than just the three cities involved here, but I really welcome their input. Happy to answer any questions. I'd request that if the two city managers might be willing to come up and give their thoughts, and maybe we can hold questions until the end. But I defer that to the Board. Thank you.
Supervisor Swatier.
It's not really a question that will sway my decision, but just curious, has there been any approved projects for this amount of money from the earmarks that Congress overall has access to? Not looking to see if Congressman Thompson came home with that amount, but just overall projects? Is that something that we've seen?
That's a fair question. I don't have the answer to that. I don't know if that's something that Brad may have discussed with City Manager Flora, who's coming to the front of the room.
Alan Flora, City Manager, Clear Lake, Chair Pisgah, Board Members. I may have a little bit of insight into that. I mean, I think this is a pretty fluid process. Staff indicated that last year Congressman Thompson, so last year, with change in leadership, the rules change. And so, they're going to be a little different than they were last year. But there was a cap for members of Congress in the amount that they could bring back to their district last year, although Congressman Thompson was able to bring back more than that cap. So, you know, projects that he's supportive of or other congresspeople are supportive of, you know, I think there's a variety of ways to get the funding out on that. So, in talking to Congressman Thompson's staff, he was encouraged, you know, you might as well shoot for it and see what we can figure out. And I think the position that hopefully we're going to be in soon, both cities have approved the JPA agreements on your agenda today, the fact that sort of all three of us would be, you know, we're all kind of waiting to see if the Board supports this, but our intention is to have both city councils approve a similar resolution for this project later this week. And that sort of joint ask would put a very strong foot forward for this type of project funding. And I don't know if you have any other questions on that. I mean, I guess since I'm here, I think, you know, these are, it's a large ask. They are bold and impactful projects that have impacts on public safety, I believe, the health in our community, as well as just providing a lot of fun recreation amenities for youth. And, you know, we have all put forward money jointly to start our polling and whatnot, to see what tax measure would look like to support these projects. And we've only got some very preliminary numbers, but it looks like there is significant support for this. But the thought being that if we could capture a large chunk of this funding from another source like this, it would take that burden off of our local taxpayers from having to pick up such a significant chunk of that initial investment. And it's not surprising that our preliminary numbers indicate that, of course, the less you ask the taxpayer for, the more support they have for the project. So, anyway, I hope you'll consider supporting this request.
Appreciate the response.
Thank you.
Just as a final comment, without knowing exactly what either city council may or may not approve, I think that changes the potential for the outcome just because it would be strange for us to say yes to a project that is definitely going to benefit the region, but definitely also benefits the cities themselves in a very direct way, and not have the city councils approve that same project. So, I almost feel like if this is what we want to move forward, that there's a conditional that if the cities don't sign on that, I don't know. It would feel weird if that was the case. So, just a topic of conversation again. Not sure which direction to go at this moment, just expressing.
City Manager Ingram.
Thank you, Kevin Ingram, City Manager of City of Lakeport, Honorable Chair, Board Members. First, directly to Supervisor Swatier's question. The City of Lakeport's intent is we're going to be holding a special meeting tomorrow evening, requesting our council to take similar action to what you guys are today. And at this point, you know, I have tentatively in there the $31.8 million ask. But I mean, if that changes during this conversation, we'll certainly modify our proposal, too. It's our intent to kind of follow suit, do this jointly. The City Council of Lakeport, and I know Clear Lake as well, they've already passed the JPA and are supportive of this going together. But obviously, doing the ask together is going to be a big piece. We know this is the first step in what I guess we could say is a crazy process. You know, we know that if we make this first, you know, onto Congressman Thompson's list, that's just the work just starting. And so, I mean, I'm sure this is going to be a fluid process all the way through and moves through. But I think, you know, encouraged by the discussion that Mr. Flora had with Congressman Thompson's office, that they recognized the effort that the region has put in and the need. And if they're saying, you know what, give it a shot, I mean, we know that by no means means that we are going to be able to get the full $30 million. But I think we should take that shot. And even if we come away with enough to get started on the pre-development aspects of it, that's still going to be a win in this process. As Mr. Flora already mentioned, the preliminary data coming in is the community is very supportive of the concept. Of course, when you start to ask them for, you know, the utilization of their tax monies, that starts to get a little bit more of a discussion. But no surprises, the more that we can commit, we always knew this was the case, the more that we could put on the table to push towards this project, the greater the ability to get that tax measure across would be. And I think this is a fantastic opportunity. And I think that we should certainly, you know, reach for it, reach for the $31.8. And there's going to be a lot more effort moving forward with this. And I think with all three players, you know, the cities and the county on board to kind of pull that lift, it puts us in a really good position. So, yeah, no, I think that overall, if your Board decides to, whatever amount you guys are pushing for today, that's our intent to be asking for that jointly, not going at this in a different measure, but all together.
Okay, so Chair Pisgah, I don't know if you want to take Board questions before we go on to the next project, or if you'd like an introduction to the other projects.
Do we have any more questions on this item? Oh, Supervisor Green.
Yeah, just real quickly. It is a big ask, and even when we come back to the JPA item. So, pre-development support makes perfect sense because if nothing else, we would take those various iterations that were in the feasibility study and kind of hone in on one or two of those. My question for staff would be, in this big-ticket item, have we identified within that feasibility study that we're going for a certain thing? I mean, there are certain checkboxes we have to check. So, you know, have we identified? We're not talking one rec center. We're talking two. Have we identified it's going to be covered? It's going to be uncovered? You know, again, this kind of bounces back and forth between recreation in general and the specific visions of an aquatic center or two aquatic centers serving the county's residents. So, not opposed to necessarily making the big ask. I just want to make sure that we have the big vision to go, we have enough answers in that big vision to put together a meaningful package with the cities.
All right, Lars Ewing, Public Services Director. Again, to answer that question, the figure that was established, $31.8 million, that is 75% of the estimated capital costs for both facilities, indoor aquatic center in Lakeport and a recreation center in Clear Lake. So, $42.4 million for that. That includes construction costs and soft costs, which are both pre-development and soft costs during construction. So, that's about 25% of the overall cost. So, to directly answer the question, $42.4 million is the overall estimate for both facilities, indoor pool and a rec center in Clear Lake.
I think we can go on to the next one? Oh, sorry, come on up.
Thank you, Alan Flora, City Manager. I just want to make one quick comment related to your question, Supervisor Green. Of course, there's always the option for sort of value engineering facilities and all that, depending on available resources. But we felt like with the work that's already been done, the feasibility study, the sort of cost estimates and all that show a lot of project readiness that some other asks may not have. And so, at this point, we felt like it was important to tie the ask directly to that feasibility report that we jointly had done and have that backup as part of the application.
Right, but within that study, there was a range of alternatives. So, it sounds like you've settled on some preferred alternatives within that.
Well, the most recent, the Phase 2, one narrowed down those, I believe. And so, it just focuses on the aquatic center in Lakeport at Westside Park, the recreation center at the Burns Valley Project in Clear Lake. Although, like, the roof covering of the aquatic center here and all that was a separate line item, so we could identify that as possible future value engineering if needed.
Okay. Thank you, City Managers Flora and Ingram, and thank you, Lars, Director Ewing, for your contributions to that item. And now, we have City Manager Ingram and Community Development Director Turner, who are, Director Turner is on Zoom, and they're prepared to speak and respond to your Board's questions regarding the Regional Navigation Center item.
I'll take a first shot at it, and Maria can certainly bail me out if I get stuck. I think, you know, it comes as no surprise where this need comes from. I mean, you know, just some basic statistics from the City of Lakeport's own, and I'm sure those, you know, jump across easily to what the county is also experiencing. But nearly 2/3 of our call volume through our Lakeport Police Department are related to either homelessness or people experiencing mental health crisis. We've had a very successful program over the past couple of years in partnership with the Lake Family Resource Center in embedding a crisis response worker directly into our Lakeport Police Department staff. They go out, they make contact with individuals on a very regular basis. And there's been a lot of great, you know, things that have come across that. But some of the hurdles that we keep hitting are having the ability to connect them with the services that are out there and available to them. And we've been meeting very regularly with Lake County Behavioral Health, and they've come out a couple of times and observed the program and have helped us identify a couple of those areas to kind of help streamline that process. But really, the best kind of move forward is this Regional Navigation Center approach. It would kind of tie a bunch of different things together. It kind of takes the track of, you know, kind of a housing-first sort of approach with also the idea of having some available facilities there where, you know, some on-call folks could be there to provide services directly when they're identified and try and plug those gaps and pieces together. So, that's really the kind of idea, the main crux of the idea behind the development of a regional center. It's also very clear that that needs to be located in an area which is close to services, which would be, you know, in the incorporated area. So, we recognize that our role to play in that process. It's, there's a lot of different opportunities here. I think some of those are listed in your staff report. But this touches on multiple facets, and I'm sure that as we grow and develop this, it's going to be clear that there may be other directions to go that are going to have benefits as well. At this point, we're asking for just the pre-development costs. We know this is a much larger ask, you know, approximately probably $10 million to develop the full facility. But where we're at right now is we believe that we're working at identifying a site. We're making some pretty good progress there. And the next kind of step in that process would be a needs assessment and getting the pre-development package together for the development of the site. And that's what we're seeking here. I'm sure Maria has been a very close partner through this, both as her time as a city council member of City of Lakeport and now with her Community Development hat. She's been a great partner and piece in this. The City of Lakeport has dedicated its permanent housing loan funds to this endeavor as well. But those are only going to get us so far. Assistant City Manager Nick Walker in my office has been, you know, just trying to establish a greater connection and get us more heavily involved with the Lake County Continuum of Care. So, we know that this is an aspect that needs to reach across different areas. But this also seemed like a fantastic opportunity to kind of jumpstart this project moving forward. So, I'm certainly able to answer any questions, and I'm sure Maria can add a few other finer points. But I'm open to any questions.
Thank you. Community Development Director Maria Turner. This navigation center has been sort of at the top of mind for quite a while, both when I was working with the City of Lakeport and since I moved over to the county. Because as we all know, housing is a dire need here, especially for our currently unhoused residents. And so, one of the great things, if we can realize, when we eventually do realize this low-barrier navigation center is the different types of housing that would be offered. There would be not only an emergency shelter with an area for onsite services, but also the supportive or transitional housing option and safe parking lot. So, we would be reaching out to our local residents, who, you know, don't all come just from Lakeport, but they're regional already. There are county residents as well and would meet their needs in a variety of different ways. So, recently, when the Board of Supervisors declared an emergency, a shelter emergency, so that we could open up Elijah House, part of that declaration also includes developing a plan to get out of the shelter emergency. And if it pleases the Board, I think that getting, moving forward with this Regional Navigation Center would be a very helpful part of that plan. And I'll pass it back to City Manager Ingram and Deputy City Manager Walker for any nitty-gritty number stuff. Thanks.
Thank you. Just a quick question on your first view of this. What is the belief on how many folks would be helped via this navigating system?
We're looking at approximately 25 to 30 in that range of kind of small housing starts. But as Director Turner noted, there would be definitely some area for some safe parking. We know that there's a lot of, you know, folks that live in their homes. A lot of times, the animals are not allowed into the shelters, and so, a lot of folks choose to stay in their cars instead. So, offering that as an opportunity area there as well. But certainly, that's one of the fundamental pieces that needs assessment that will help us identify that number a little better.
And I wish I had this information in my head, but I don't. Do you know what the pick count for Lakeport has been?
I've been looking for it, and I honestly haven't done it in the last week or so to see what the new numbers are. So, I don't know those numbers off the top of my head.
Thank you.
Supervisor Green.
Yeah, strongly supportive. But on the last item, we were like, oh, you know, reach for the moon, why not? So, I don't know if it's a different pot of money or a different appropriations subcommittee, but this ask is just for pre-development. I know there's going to be other hard costs, probably, possibly including a property acquisition, engineering, possibly some site remediation, depending on which one you're locking in. So, was there any talk in this new reality that is the new Congress and the new earmark process that we could ask for more than just pre-development costs? This seemed to me, I mean, no offense to the last project, but this is much more mission-critical to me and much more likely, I think, to be able to draw in additional sources of revenue from different places. But the initial ask, pre-development plus maybe some site acquisition money, has there been any thought of that? Is there any possibility of that, given what we just heard on the last item? Are there some flexibilities from Thompson's office that would allow a broader vision than this?
Thank you, a very fair question, Supervisor. I mean, I don't think we're going to say no if there's room for more. I think the critical difference between the two projects being that the previous item, the rec center and aquatic center, there's already been a lot of work in the completion of the feasibility studies, one and two. We haven't done that in this case. It's, we're kind of, you know, probably a step behind that in putting this together. So, at this point, I think, you know, confidently asking for the pre-development fees in the process of that seems to be the best call. But I mean, like I said in the last item, this is a very fluid situation. If we get in conversations with the congressman's office, that this seems to be something that they really want to take forward and be something bigger, then I think we're certainly ready at the city side to do the heavy lift to make that so. But at this time, I think the ask for the pre-development piece is the most reasonable approach.
If I may, also additionally, we are keeping our eye open for all other future possible funding as well. So, I know that the Board did talk this morning regarding the PLHA funds that are assigned to the Collier Avenue Apartments. They are only using two out of five years of those funds. And so, when the next NOFA is
So if your board has no further questions on that particular item, we'll transition to the Water Resources Department's two projects. And Director DeLeon and Deputy Director Delagianis are here to answer any questions and speak to those projects.
Good morning, Board. Scott DeLeon, Public Works and Water Resources Director. I'm going to answer any questions or provide just perhaps a short summary of, of one of the projects, and then Marina will handle the one that we added this morning. So the Big Valley Fish Habitat Improvement and Groundwater Recharge Project is a project that we applied for some state grant funding. Last year, we were not selected, and so we thought it would be a good fit with some of the funding objectives that were identified in, in the Congressman's ask. And basically, it is a two-part project. The, the major part of the project is a modification of the outlet structure in the Highland Springs Reservoir. It will allow for additional storage of water within the reservoir, and, and it has a number of positive impacts, largely increase in groundwater recharge in the groundwater or in the Big Valley Basin, which will have hopefully a positive impact on habitat in the creeks for the hitch. If we can add additional water into the groundwater basin, then we're hoping that we'll see better spawning habitat in the spring. The other part of the project is some repairs to the Kelsey Creek Detention Structure, also a very important facility that we manage that helps with groundwater recharge in the basin. So it's a two-part project, and if you have any questions about that, I'll be happy to try to answer them. But we appreciate the opportunity to propose this project and for your consideration. Had I known that the, the bar was so high on some of these other projects, I, I might have added some more stuff, like maybe some new roads to these facilities, but fortunately, I didn't do that. So thank you for your opportunity. I'll answer any questions if you have any.
Supervisor Green?
Yeah, thank you. Super excited to see this project and, which is the Adobe Creek Conjunctive Use Project that's been on and off for several years now. So the only real quick question I have is, this is kind of a blended project for the purpose of this ask to Congress, but on the Adobe Creek Project in particular, I know as far back as 2017, there was a mitigated NEG deck, so I know that project is relatively shovel-ready, or, or is there additional permitting that, that needs to happen?
There's actually some, quite a bit of a design work that's still necessary. This is not a shovel-ready project. We need to put plans and specs together for modification of the outlet structure. So though the preliminary environmental work may be done, there's, there's still a fair amount of work in design, and we've incorporated that into the ask of funding set aside for that.
And I also noticed what's in the name. Well, what's in the name here is fish, and I really appreciate that. So as we're tweaking the design concept, groundwater recharge, a big part of it, but also some potential capacity for stream flow management, the, the ability to do some supplemental flows if possible. And of course, there is no free lunch. If we're flowing water down, we're not keeping water in the reservoir for other purposes. So, and the reason I highlight that is one, I noticed that, not really rebranding, but the expansion to include a real focus on Clear Lake Hitch Habitat Improvement, and I think that will give us a competitive edge. So I just want to highlight that there is some additional detail provided when this moves forward on the potential ability to do some stream flow management and the fact that both of these projects together are going to be hitch beneficial. Is that kind of, am I reading it right? It's kind of being branded appropriately to take advantage of not just the groundwater recharge part, but the fish habitat improvement?
Yes.
Okay.
Obviously, both are, both are, both of those issues are, have the spotlight on, on them. And so by combining those, the projects and, and combining the benefits of them and highlighting the benefits, again, I think, as you stated, I think it, it definitely garners a lot of support from a multitude of, of, of folks interested in this, right? The sponsors or the, the people that are interested in additional groundwater, the folks that are interested in the hitch habitat. It's, it's, I hate to use the cliche win-win, but it, it is a, a very, a project that has some, some real positive benefit.
Thank you. And for Director Turner, if she's still with us, any major impediments to, to, you know, permitting of whatever recasting we have to do with this project, or what would be the, you know, I mean, it has nothing to do with us putting in an earmark request, but what's the state of the, the permitting?
Our staff always stands ready to handle any priority from the board, especially where we can work in conjunction with other, other departments.
Thank you.
Supervisor Spatia?
I'm going to start off on the, the wrong foot. I hope I don't offend, but I, in the letter that we received from Thompson's office, it says that these projects are proposals critical to the well-being of the people of your district, and then it says that it does not allow for defense, education, labor, and certain conservation programs. Have we reviewed if this ask would be denied or based on just those categories? Because this may be under conservation, I don't know. I'm just trying to figure out if that, if there's been any communication with Congressman's Office to kind of check in and see, does this meet the potential guidelines of what a approved project might be?
So Supervisor Spatia, I can speak briefly to that. I did speak to Congressman Thompson's staff in a preliminary manner. We, obviously, we didn't have your board's priorities set yet, but did ask about that specifically out of concern that conservation may preclude this project from being funded. And their position was that it, it could be submitted and, and would be competitive under the EPA.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
The development of additional water resources was a priority, a funding priority also identified. And, and while this does have a potential benefit for hitch habitat, it, it will significantly improve groundwater resources, which I, I believe meets those funding objectives.
Thank you for bringing this forward. I, I do agree that this, with Supervisor Green, that this is a, I know you said win-win, but I agree. Last month, we had two entities here discussing the endangered species, and this project would ensure that they all benefit from this, considering one of the things that, you know, we were, the topic of discussion. So I like the fact that it, it helps with both, you know, groups of interest, and I like the fact that it's happening in these, in these different streams, because those are the highest, you know, the highest traffic as they, you know, brought to us of the Chai. And I do know that we were funded the 750 for the Middle Creek Restoration Project, which helps with the habitat of those fish as well, and this is going to as well. So I just, I think it's, I like it, and it's a synergistic win, I think, if we can be funded, so.
Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello again. Nice to see you, Board. Marina Delagianis, Deputy Water Resources Director for the Lake County Water Resources Department. I appreciate you, Board, accepting the consideration of this proposed project. I'm going to be using the acronym AEM, and that stands for the Airborne Electromagnetic Survey of Lake County Groundwater Basins. That includes Middle Creek, Upper Lake Valley, Long Valley, High Valley, Scotts Valley, Coyote Valley, and the Caliomi Valley Basins. This is going to imitate and mirror directly what we were able to conduct through our AEM surveys provided by the California Department of Water Resources in our Big Valley Basin, and that's how we were able to develop the timeline and the proposed costs. Timeline being anticipated of 12 months and anticipated cost of $300,000. So the overall goal of this project, as we know, past, present, and future drought in California tests the resiliency of our communities and our water supplies, including surface water and groundwater, and how we can best prepare and plan for those future droughts that we have and prepare for the current drought that we are still in. Even though this water is nice, we are currently still in drought conditions. So the goal of this project is to develop a white paper report discussing groundwater issues and trends across the various groundwater basins in our Lake County community. The AEM technology can enhance our understanding of surface water and groundwater interactions to help determine if groundwater pumping is lowering stream levels and therefore contributing to the decline of the state-listed threatened species of the fish, our hitch friends, and Clear Lake and other groundwater-dependent species. I would also like to note that this will impact our drinking water supplies, too. Conducting these surveys will help us better understand all water resources throughout the county. As we know, Clear Lake provides drinking water to 60% of our Lake County community residents, so being able to better understand how the connectivity between our surface water and groundwater interacts will help us better prepare for these droughts and, of course, our water purveyors and all of Lake County communities. And at that point, I will take any questions from the board.
Just a question from the Blue Ribbon Committee perspective. Was it, was there an issue with the project, or is it just that there were other projects of higher interest that took over, and that's why it wasn't funded by the Blue Ribbon Committee? Just kind of looking for what their comments were.
Yeah, I appreciate you bringing that up. So this project was approved and voted on by the Blue Ribbon Committee. They did support this project. The issue why this project was not able to move forward in that area was because there was no funding through the governor's office, so lack of funding.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. Thank you.
Well, unless your board has further questions, that concludes the presentation for this item.
So we have a diverse group of projects, and is it recommended that we move all of them forward? What, what are your thoughts on that?
Staff would recommend that your board move each of the four presented here today forward. Yes.
Oh, really? Do we have a resolution, do we have resolutions prepped for the add-ons?
Yes.
We do, and just one point of order, the title of the resolution related to the Recreation Center and Aquatic Swim Center project is changed to reflect the expansion of the project, so that will need to be reflected in the action you take. And I can, I don't know if I'm allowed to present the title, or if that should be, okay. So I'll be prepared to present the title of the resolution when you're ready.
Okay. Do you have a question? Do we have anyone in the chambers who'd like to give input on this or on Zoom? Okay. I'm not seeing anybody in either place, so I will bring it back to the board for action and, or further conversation and action.
With 15 projects from the entire district, and each city and each county gets to propose their own projects, like, I don't mind submitting two, but submitting all four, just, I don't know. Just feels like it's diluting the pool of potential projects. They're all important, but like, for example, the, the last one that we heard of, the AEM, is asking for $300,000. I think there's opportunities that we can find. I, I think that with the PLHA, we just heard that there's more money and we're not using all of that. And so, again, well, not, we're not using all of that, but there is more coming. We're always able to access funds. There's more than just No Place Like Home, or there's, there's more than just what's being utilized or what's being asked to be utilized. I'd hate to send more and feeling like we're asking too much where we get nothing versus really focusing on one or two, but that, that's...
I'm just waiting.
I'm hearing clicking, so I'm feeling somebody has something to say.
I do. With the chair's permission?
Go ahead.
All right. What we've found in the last two years is that Congressman Thompson's offices have actually asked us to submit more, because they felt they weren't, other communities were getting much more in grant funds than we were, but we just didn't have any shovel-ready projects. The other thing is, as long as the projects aren't going to the same subcommittee, and Matthew can confirm that, they actually move forward separately to the different subcommittees. So it doesn't really impact whether we send two or four, as long as they're not competing against each other in the subcommittees. So I'll look to Matthew to make sure that we did confirm they're not competing.
Yes. So, and obviously, the projects have not been through the entirety of the process yet, but preliminarily, it does not appear that the projects would compete at the subcommittee level. And I can confirm that my sense from conversations with Congressman Thompson's staff mirrors CAO Parker's own that submitting more projects, if anything, and not less, is the expectation.
And then, you know, we don't know either if those committees are highly competitive or less competitive, and so we have more projects and more committees. So it increases our likelihood to find one that hits the sweet spot at least. Go ahead.
And I, I'd say we ask for the 31 rather than 3.1. If this is what we're being kind of guided by Congressman Thompson's office to request, and knowing the process that we had with the Armory where multiple conversations eventually got us what we received, let's hope that at least it opens up the door for those types of conversations, and let's see what we get out of it. So that, I would say, I'd love to see that amendment that was made to the resolution stay, so that that is the ask that we make.
You have a comment?
Just in favor of submitting all four. You know, hopefully, next year, what we'll be doing is submitting for big road projects. That's what I'm open for. I don't know if Scott's listening, but next year, we got to have the plan in place so we can submit for roads and be ready to go. So, you know, so I'm in agreement with submitting all four. I'm in agreement with the change, the 31 million, too, so.
Which one's first, or we got to, can we do all? All of them? We have to do one of them, right?
One from individually?
Okay. So I'll, I'll offer the resolution for Big Valley Fish Habitat Improvement and Groundwater Recharge.
Yes.
Supervisor Spatia?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Green?
Aye.
And Supervisor Pisgah?
Yes.
All offer the resolution for pre-development support for a Recreation Center.
Wait, Matthew has the title.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah. Be happy to read the title.
Oh, sorry.
Resolution of the Board of Supervisors of the County of Lake, State of California, to submit the Recreation Center and Aquatic Community Swim Center project for consideration as a community project funding proposal as amended.
I offer the resolution.
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Spatia?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Green?
Aye.
And Supervisor Pisgah?
Yes.
Do I got to, okay. So I will offer the resolution for the Regional Navigation Center Pre-Development Support Project.
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Spatia?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Green?
Aye.
And Supervisor Pisgah?
Yes.
And then lastly, I will offer the resolution affirming the Airborne Electromagnetic Survey of Lake County's Groundwater Basins Project as among Lake County's highest community project funding priorities. Did I miss something on that, or is that all of it? Okay.
Okay.
Making sure.
All right. Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Spatia?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Green?
Aye.
And Supervisor Pisgah?
Yes. Okay. Well, I want to thank staff for pulling this together. I know it wasn't a lot of notice, and some of you were gone, but our CAO did warn us that earmarks would be coming, and so it's just something that we've got to be prepared for each and every year and, and hope for the best. So thank you so much for pulling all this together, and thank you to the cities for joining us today. us today. Okay, 6.9, our 1015 item. Consideration update on the Parks, Recreation, and Trails Master Plan from Public Services.
Good morning, Lars Uing, Public Services Director. I am joined on Zoom by Mindy Craig of Blue Point Planning. Your board will recall that we are, we're in the process of a master plan for Parks, Recreation, and Trails. Your board approved the project, the contract with Blue Point Planning in the fall of last year, I believe, and we are about, about three to four months in, which timeline-wise is about, oh, a fifth, maybe a quarter of the way through. And I wanted to take this opportunity to, to just update your board. Number one, introduce Blue Point Planning, but update the board on the work to date and probably more importantly, the work that still remains. Mindy is the president, I believe would be your title of Blue Point Planning, and I'll let her introduce herself. She has a presentation to go through, should be relatively brief. There's no action item on this other than, than always direction to staff, but I, I hope you're, I hope you're receptive to receiving an update and I'll turn it over to Mindy.
Great, thanks, everybody. So yes, I'm Mindy Craig with Blue Point Planning and really excited to be here. I've been working in the field of parks and recreation for about 25 years and have had the opportunity to do Parks and Recreation Master Planning up and down the state, most recently your neighbor in Mendocino, also all over the thing, the area. So very excited to be here and talk to you a little bit about where we are and where we're going, so, and obviously answer any questions. So let me go ahead and share my screen, and if there are any, any questions as we're going through, please let me know that. Okay, great. So first off, I just want to start off with where we are and talk a little bit about this, this process. So as Lars said, we have been working on this for a few months and often we find that this initial phase is the most critical and the longest because we are really building out of deep understanding of the community, really getting to all the different pieces of the existing conditions, knowing the community, talking with the community, so that we can then have a really strong space to start understanding needs and developing the recommendations. And so that's really where we are, and you can see, this is, this is sort of the place we've been at. So we've done a lot of engagement already. We have a steering committee group. We have a small group meetings that we've done, conversations with communities. We have a user survey that has just closed with over nearly 600 responses and an engagement website to keep people up to date. So after this phase, which is that existing conditions and deep analysis of all your parks facilities and looking at programs as well and what's offered in the community, we're going to start developing our vision and identify those opportunities. What are those recommendations and what are those different areas that we can do for all the different parks? That will then culminate into the opportunities and strategies for the plan. At that point, we want to start prioritizing those. What are the most important? What are the things we're going to do right now? What are the things that might be pushed out to the future? And then also start to look more closely, what does it mean for staffing? What does it mean for the operations and costs of those elements? And make sure that those are also connected and aligned with the county's needs. At that point, we'll then start developing our implementation plan. When are these things going to happen? Criteria that will help the county continue to guide their decisions as we go forward, with culminating ultimately in our Parks and Recreation Master Plan in 2020, the end of this year. So just quick note, we do have a website. Highly recommend anybody here who is listening in or the supervisors to take a look at that. That will be the place we will continue to keep information. It's where we had our survey and we'll have, continue to have our findings and results. Our steering committee is very representative, has a lot of people from the county participating, everything from equestrians to the healthcare, the Lakeside Hospital, we have the cities part of that, we have the Middletown, Manchuria, the tribal health organization, the Lake Area Planning Council, so we can think about transportation, blue zones. We're really being holistic about what we think about this plan. There's been a lot of conversation today already about these, the benefits of parks and recreation for the community, and we're really seeing that both as a transportation, recreation, health, and wellness, as well as tourism and economic development. So when we're looking and talking about what our strategies are, we are taking in information from all those different perspectives. As I mentioned, we started off by having our steering committee, meetings with arts, culture, and communities, our business and tourism, of course, sports and outdoors, trails and land, land management. And we've had continuing engagement with the staff and with the survey. And going forward, we'll continue to do that again on that website. We're going to have an in-person vision effort in April. We're coming back in the fall for that priorities workshop, and then ultimately, when we get to the final plan, we'll do some pop-up engagement to share out that plan in the fall of 2023. And each one of these elements, we'll have in-person, but we will also have some digital aspect that people can interact with, if, you know, it's hard to get to a meeting or they're just not able to. So we really are trying to be as inclusive as possible depending on where people are. So I want to just give you an overview of some of the initial things out of our existing conditions analysis that we've done so far. These are the key takeaways. I'm not going to go too far into depth in this. We have lots of information and data that we're sharing with Lars and his team, but this is just the highlights. So our, what the summary is initially is a community profile. So who lives in the county, you know, what does it look like? What are the issues around climate change, what are demographics? What do, what do we see there? We're also doing a park inventory and classification of what the parks are so we can better understand from a geographic perspective, you know, do we have neighborhood parks, community parks, or regional parks, and are they serving the residents or are they serving tourists and visitors? You know, how, how are they actually operating? We're also looking at trails, and we're looking at it from a different perspective than the Canacti Regional Trails Plan, which is, instead of thinking about it as a connectivity, transportation only, we're really thinking about how they become part of our recreational amenity for the county. We're also thinking and looking at trends so those can inform how recreation programs can be part of what's happening from the county's perspective. That's a whole different element and it's really important. One of the things I always say, they say, build it and they will come, and I said, well, not quite, program it and they will come. So we're going to help the county understand how to program parks in a way to increase activation and engagement on a whole different level, a whole bunch of different levels. We're also looking at different projects that are already being considered and looking at comparables. And we've had a great conversation of Lake, which is, Lake County is really unique, and I'll talk about that in a little different, in a moment, but how do we actually compare and how do we find good models to build our recommendations? And obviously trends, you know, we want to see what are other counties and places doing that we can do here that will serve the community better. So just as a brief snapshot, you probably know lots of this, the population's just over 68,000 people. There is a pretty old community here. It's much older than the median age in California with the median age of 46, so not quite as many children. So how does that mean when we look at all the parks? Are we serving that population well? Are we giving them the tools and the mechanisms to enjoy and to be healthy? And then when we look at the younger kids and the teenagers, how do we also serve them? Because we want to be inclusive of all ages. We have a slightly lower median income than the average in California, so how does that impact things? What, when we think about creating programs or spaces like rental picnic areas, how does the cost, how do the fees feed into that? We do have a fairly high level of poverty in the county, so about 13% of the community does that, lives in poverty. It's very rural, as you guys all know, a big county with not very many people per square mile, which is probably why lots of people love it. We also have a high number of Hispanic Latino community members and about 11% who speak Spanish primarily at home. Finally, we have 17% of the population live in mobile homes or RVs. So how does that mean in terms of their ability to access, engage, and have recreation near them and for them? It's much higher than the population as a whole. So parks-wise, you have a rich, wonderful network of parks in the county, almost 2,000 acres, including local, community, regional parks, some that are as small as half an acre in, in Lakeport to these large, over 1,000-acre parks. So really a diversity of that. There's a lot of parks developed around the lake, of course. There's different, nine different sites specifically that allow you to get into the water with a boat. And we also have the Highland Spring Recreation Area as another very important county park resource. And the CIP and major projects that are going on are also going to expand these services even more so. As I mentioned already, trails are an important part of this to think about how do people walk and enjoy this, really creating some connectivity for recreation to improve health, to increase the ability and access to parks. So we are going to be working continually with the Canacti Regional Trail Plan to think about how to activate those trails, how to increase the possibilities of programs and activities that really engage the community members. And of course, will probably serve our visitors as well. So as I mentioned earlier, the comparables is a really interesting challenge when we started to look at that because there's other counties as big as yours, but not as many parks. You're one of the only operators of parks, and a lot of counties, you have a lot of cities who are doing a great deal of that work. Here in Lake County, it's you, the county, who is actually doing the parks management and operations and now programming. So they're kind of a different role than a lot of counties. You have a large visitor population, so you have these highs and lows. So in the middle of the summer, you have a different population you're serving than you do in the middle of the winter. So how does that look? As I mentioned earlier, this diversity, you have lake and mountains and everything in between in terms of the diversity of parks and facilities you're managing and thinking about. The Parks Department itself within the county manages about 1,800 acres, but then you also have these large, other non-county managed parks, well, county parks managed, which is Highland Springs and the Helen Mitchum Park as well. And there's a lot more coming down the pike in terms of potential recreation trails, opportunities that the county will be looking for. So what are some of the trends? Again, you're going to know a lot of this, but something that was happening even before COVID happened was this desire to be outdoors. Outdoor recreation, outdoor economic development is huge. COVID really pushed the need to be out in nature even more so, so that outdoor lifestyle is a huge trend and opportunity for the county to really bring people in and become, continue to be an iconic place to visit and be part of nature. The other piece, which is really great for your community, is this health wellness piece. Obesity has been an issue throughout the US. Parks and recreation that are accessible and able to be connected really help to contribute to better health and better wellness, and it also was, again, an economic development benefit. Parks for all, that means we're talking about kids who are 2, 1, and seniors who are 80. We want to make sure that we're thinking about the entire spectrum of people as well as what their abilities are. So people who may not be able to walk, so who's in a wheelchair or somebody who might have strollers or walkers, what does that mean? How do we have truly Parks for All? What does that look like? As I mentioned, children's and teens, building and affordability. Technology is another thing, and this is a positive and a negative. Some people like myself are not really excited about technology in parks, but they also can be a benefit. They can help people get around, they can help people understand the different activities for them, certainly they can help with mapping and walking and trails, so that's exciting. And one other element we'll be looking at is issues around climate change and adaptation. So we know that everything from water management and quality to wildfires are all a concern here in the county, and we want to put that into this plan. Parks can be a really great strategy to help buffer some of the worst elements of climate change and be a part of your resilience and adaptation strategy, and we want to make sure that happens, as well as look at impacts potentially to trees and to water sources that are within the parks. So I also just wanted to give a high little level of some of the input we've gotten to date, and we're going to also just quickly go into our surveys. Not surprising, some of our strengths is the beauty and the biodiversity of the lake and the number of parks we have here in the county, and there's so many different opportunities from mountain biking to sailing. The free boat launches are great, and there's a lot of engaged community members who are out there volunteering and wanting to improve the area. But there are some challenges. The water level in the lake, the lake is already a fairly shallow body of water and it's kind of makes it unique, but it can be problematic in terms of how drought years impact it and the ability to go and actually use your boats and so forth. We need more awareness and building of the understanding of Lake County, especially for recreation, and then we need more opportunities. We need more biking, swimming, things like disc golf, that ADA accessibility, so universal design and making sure that it's accessible in all ways, and then more areas and places for the public to access the lake. And then finally, better transportation connectivity for the public and those who may not have access to a car. Okay, quickly, last, last bit here is our preliminary results from the survey. We literally just closed it yesterday, so these are very high level at this point. We had 571 responses. Lakeport, you know, is a fairly good representation across the county. Lakeport had slightly more with 21 and with Kelseyville right behind it, but lots of representation from the entire county, which was great. And really, I'll have to give props to Lars and his crew for getting that word out. They really did an amazing job on that. Some of the top reasons for people are visiting the parks in Lake County, so walking, hiking, backpacking, that enjoying the quiet and the relaxation, picnicking, bird watching and wildlife viewing, and of course, exercise. So we also asked, how well do each of the parks and areas meet your family needs? So just a visual of this, the yellow means okay. So it seems like overall, okay is the number one answer here. So when we look at this, like, okay, it's fine, but we really want to try and see if we can get up to that very well, extremely well on more of these elements. So, you know, the open spaces and natural areas seem to be pretty highly elemented or regarded, but some of the other ones, like the sports courts, not so great, swimming not as great. I heard earlier about the Parks and Recreation Facility and Aquatic Center. I think that would be one of the reasons people are in support of that. So we will be taking this apart and looking at it more closely to really understand where those pluses and minuses are. What do we want to see more of? So more hiking trails, more flat walking and jogging places, places for dogs to play and hike with, more picnic facilities with shelters and barbecues, improving the playgrounds and more games like ping pong or bocce ball. So that's it on the survey, and I just, again, what we're going to do next is this final needs assessment on all the parks so that the staff will really understand, you know, park by park, what is the conditions and what do we need to improve from both a physical perspective, but also things like, is it serving the function we need to? Is it also serving the function within the entire system? That visioning and goals, and that's going to be that in-person activity that's coming up here in April and May, and then building on that as opportunities and potential direction for our parks, programs, and trails. And with that, I will end and stop sharing my screen and take any questions.
Thank you, Mindy.
Do you have anything more to add?
No, a few, few highlights there. She commented on the cities and I just heard some clarity there. I think some of the comparisons of other counties, oftentimes they'll have a Parks and Recreation District that includes the cities. So clearly, we know that the two cities here in Lake County do have parks, facilities, they maintain them on their own, just, just to make sure that they're, that was clear. You know, it's, it's coincidental that she prepared the slides based on the low water level being a challenge while we're now facing the possibility of high water level being challenged. So I, I think the, the point there to emphasize is that water level is a challenge. It's, it's extreme, it fluctuates, and that's something that we need to be able to adapt to and be prepared for either way. I'm going to finish it with a, why we chose Blue Point, and I appreciate Mindy's presentation. A couple of points that they brought to the table that, that to me stood out, the main one being the sustainable operations. It's, it's one thing to build a park, it's another thing to maintain it and be able to sustain that, that maintenance. And so that's something that they'll, they'll now be... And so that's something that they'll now be considering as we move ahead, looking at how are we staffed, how are we funded to manage not only what we have in our inventory, but what we might have in the future, both things that are, John Klaus Park, for example, that's coming into the county inventory, and others that we may consider in the future. And so that's a part of their analysis. And I said lastly, this was intended to be lastly. Parks, tracks and trails planner, this is a conversation that Mindy and her team and I have had, that there is no Parks, Track and Trail Planner for Lake County and for, I'll say, an inventory of our size, and with an emphasis on programs and trails above and beyond parks. I, you know, me as a director, that's something that I really look at, that we are sorely in need of. So that's the next step, and maybe a sneak peek into some of the staffing recommendations that may be coming down aside from boots on the ground maintenance, which is, to me, that's the first priority. But if we're not planning, then we have to question if we're doing is the right plan. So I'll wrap it up there and welcome any of your input.
Thank you. Comments? Okay, go ahead.
You've already stated this, and I appreciate the presentation that we've had for us today, but to me, my number one thing, and you and I have had this discussion, Director Ewing, is making sure that we have the staffing to maintain our parks and keep a certain standard so that everyone visiting our parks have a great positive experience. So I'm looking forward to seeing those numbers, seeing how that compares with what we have budgeted. But I think that, as you stated, a plan to make sure that we know what we're doing rather than just randomly deciding we're going to do this and we're going to do that, there needs to be some strategy in how we're approaching our parks and how we're expanding our parks, especially when it comes to access. I appreciated the definitions of access. It's not just for young and old, it's for disabled as well as abled. I think that's very important to make that happen. So appreciate the presentation and love our park system. I'm going to quote, I forget his last name, but it's Mike, you know his last name from the Aquatic Center guy.
Oh, Shellato.
Shellato. To me, parks are part of our economic development. If we have attractive parks, it sends a message to folks that may or may not want to move here, and ensuring that we have quality park experience is going to help us in that economic development of the county. So appreciate this master plan.
Supervisor Green?
Yeah, thank, appreciate this update for what it answers and raises some questions that I'm very interested in. Lars, you and I have talked briefly about, you know, the parks that are under your jurisdiction, and then Highland Springs in my district is under Water Resources, and whether it's Water Resources or your department, everyone's taxed thin. So definitely excited to see this process move forward. But I am very curious about how we're going to get either a synergy or come up with a common vision. We have another item coming up on a JPA. So as all these various moving pieces come together, I'm kind of getting an idea that we need, if not a unified Parks and Recreation Department organizationally, but certainly some type of wedding of ideas so that we don't have multiple departments stretched thin, that we can actually have efficiencies. And I was excited to see the reference to disc golf in there, but I didn't see any active engagement with our disc golf community. We have a very robust disc golf community in Lake County, and so we haven't had the opportunity to do active engagement. There is a Facebook page called Highland Springs Tea Times, which is a good place to reach out. Again, Highland Springs is closed right now because of the extreme weather and some very hazardous conditions out on the disc golf course, so I thank everyone for continuing to abide by that safety. But it's hard, it's hard for me to even understand if we consider the trails incorporated and then the disc golf itself as a trail that is falling within this assessment. So it is a series of trails that have baskets kind of around it, but I think if you were doing park planning or something like that, you would consider it as more of a feature than a trail. So I don't really know. So I was excited to see what input has been received. I would like to see some active outreach to our disc golfers, and thank you for the presentation.
Thank you for that. And it was referenced here, but I think it's important to note that we did intentionally include the two parks that are county but not public services. So this was, you know, this is truly a county parks outlook, and I appreciate both Special Districts and Water Resources involvement with the project to date and continued.
Great. And we have a hand up, Director Metcalf?
Yeah, you might think it's odd that I would make a comment here, but Lars and I in the past had talked about some of this stuff before, and though it was not in the presentation, awesome presentation by the way, but just wanted to also point out the importance of parks and the positive impact it has on behavioral health. You've heard me say before, good physical health goes hand in hand with good behavioral health, and I just want to say that our department fully supports this effort and whatever else we can do to help it along. It helps the folks that we serve, so just wanted to point that out.
Thank you. Public comment, if you want to come up, you have three minutes.
Joan Moss, I'm sorry I didn't hear all of it. I wanted to know if Lake County Land Trust was involved in the planning, and they are a similar group. I don't know if they're nonprofit or not, but they certainly have a lot of land that they're involved with. I just was wondering if the woman had learned about Lake County Land Trust. Thank you.
I can answer that if you'd like. Yes, Lake County Land Trust has been contacted and is involved, whether it's on one of the stakeholder groups or on the steering committee. I apologize, I don't know directly, but I can certainly follow up with them, but I am in touch with the land trust.
They're on the steering committee, Lars.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and I'm not seeing any other hands, people in the room, so I'll close public input. This is so near and dear to my heart. I'm always out on trails, hiking and biking, so I am delighted that we are moving forward with this and that trails are such an important component of this master plan. And I am really happy that there was wonderful representation from District Five on your survey. I don't know how that happened.
County, what, no, Mindy did reference the fact that we did make a big push. It was not just, let's put this thing out on Facebook. I mean, we did boots on the ground, posting in all the libraries, which thank you to Christopher Beach, grocery stores, post offices, you know, we went out and hopefully you see it there, they're here in the courthouse. So it was, you know, 571, while it's, you know, it's not a huge, huge number, that's actually a pretty, you know, pretty good number from what I understand from Mindy with other responses. So, yeah, I appreciate my staff and Blue Point for making a big effort on that.
Yeah, great job, great job. And always, I always, you know, I talk about this as whole person healthcare, and Director Medcalf brought that up, and it is absolutely true. The more you're outside and moving your body, the better your overall health is, your mental health, your physical health, all of it. And, you know, that's a commitment that this board has made to raise our health metrics, and so this is a piece of that. Anybody else have final comments? Go ahead.
Yeah, 571, huge because of the way it was structured. And one value in the survey was right up front, geolocation, you know, tell us where you live. So we have an understanding of not only what's important to you, but what in your area might be important to you. For anyone crafting online surveys, if you're not asking where the respondents live, you're kind of missing out on some good data. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mindy. Mindy? Thank you. Mindy, thank you. All right. Our final timed item, 6.10, 10:45 a.m., consideration of a joint powers agreement to form the Lake County Recreation Agency Public Services.
Okay, Lars Ewing, Public Services Director, I appreciate the time for the board's consideration of this item. As has been discussed previously in this board meeting, and I'll set the stage a little bit with the history that this effort has behind it. The background that I put in the memo goes back to just September 2022. I didn't put all the history because it builds upon that. There's been a lot of effort towards, initially the focus was a pool or aquatic center in Lake County, and that interest expanded into a recreation center. And we're to the point now where in September 2022, we presented the results of the feasibility study that was referenced earlier in your board meeting. That feasibility study was a joint effort between primarily the two cities, Lakeport and Clearlake, and the county, and really was looking at analyzing potential sites, potential, well, the needs and the potential sites for a recreation center and/or aquatic center. And as the board is aware, the two locations that the consultants identified and recommended were at Westside Park in Lakeport for an aquatic center and at Burns Valley, a future Burns Valley Sports Complex in Clearlake for a recreation center. Part of the recommendation in September was to continue moving forward with the potential establishment of a joint powers authority, and also to further investigate polling to get interest in a potential tax measure. Your board at that time directed staff to continue working towards that, and so the two cities and the counties continued with consultants to identify or prepare an agreement for a joint powers authority. So what is here in front of you is just that, consideration of an agreement for a JPA. Now, the intent is that JPA, I think we're all familiar with what a JPA is, in this case, that JPA would be focused, the title is Lake County Recreation Agency. I would not, the intent is that it not be limited to the two facilities that we've been discussing. The intent is that it can include facilities that are focused on recreation for the county, so the county as a whole. So the agreement that is there, I'm happy to answer any questions at a high level. What is being proposed are a seven-member board, two from each jurisdiction, along with one at-large member who would be appointed by the JPA members. Not included in the action item here, and if we can't add it now, then I completely understand, but if your board is supportive of the JPA, we will, I would request that we have two of your members that are appointed to that. So if we can't do that now, then I would come back at a later meeting to add that in. So I think at this point, I can answer any questions, and I believe we have Assistant Manager Nick Walker from the City of Lakeport still here, and the two cities have passed the JPA at previous city council meetings, and so we're here for that consideration.
Okay, thank you. Do you want to come up?
I didn't forewarn you.
Thank you, Chair, Supervisors. As Lars mentioned, the City Lake Board approved the JPA a couple of weeks ago, and it's, I feel like this is a unique kind of situation. I mean, we have the master plan happening, I'm on that steering committee, I've been heavily involved in this since 2020, and I think, you know, approving the JPA, you know, will help move this forward, but with the request for the funding, it's a unique opportunity for the county as a whole to move recrea, Parks and Recreation forward. I mean, I think we talked about earlier how crazy a time we live in right now, and Parks and Rec, I think, is easy to kind of say, oh, well, that's, you know, there's all these other issues that are more important, but as a lifelong resident of Lake County, you know, my generation didn't have access to great facilities. There's a lot of facilities, but there's a lot of room for improvement now that I have young children to use these facilities. I don't want us to miss that opportunity again. And so I think with all the discussions and moving forward with Parks and Rec, I think this is just a unique opportunity to kind of move this forward. And the JPA is a way to incorporate not just these two facilities that we're focused on now, but to continue to build that program and really reach so many different groups in Lake County, and whether it's economic development or health metrics, really just change, make change here in Lake County. So from the city and personally, we just appreciate you guys taking this item and hopefully you approve it.
Great, thank you.
Chair, if I could respond to one, or just add on to that, I'm going to say it in a different, exactly different way. As a, not a lifelong resident, but I was born and raised here, and so as a kid, I feel like we had more facilities then. So there was a pool that I could go to.
He's younger.
True. I went to the school, a lot of people would go to the school to do a lot of, you know, they'd use the gym, and now the impression is, do we really want to invite the public to go to the school and use the facilities? I'm, you know, I'm not in the school world, but it just seems that there's less, I used to have practices as a kid at the school, you know, for youth programs that were not through the school. Now that push seems to be, you need to find another place for, primarily for security reasons. So I just, I want to say it a different way, that I think we don't have as many facilities as I had when I was a kid.
Yeah, I agree. Okay, go ahead.
Quick question, not sure if it's a matter of next steps rather than now, but informing a JPA, there's the potential for funds to start trickling in that helps support what the JPA's mission is. Who is the lead? And who, where's the account, who's taking that responsibility?
And I'll do my best to answer at the level that I'm aware of. The JPA is the entity that would be the legal entity, and I'm using that term, so I would appreciate some commentary, but the JPA is the entity that does that. The intent is that the JPA would then, through a community facilities district, get some sort of revenue measure, so a taxing measure to do that. But I would appreciate any, the L-word of legal, you know, I'll refer to both my dad or Anita, in this case, it's Anita.
All right. Nick?
Anita.
Oh.
I would prefer Anita, Nick, I like you.
I'll give a legal opinion.
Well, who's taking the lead? Is that the county or is it?
Well, both. All the entities combined, the JPA then becomes the entity. The county is not on the hook. If the JPA is formed, then it's not the county nor the two cities that are, I believe that language is in the resolution.
Yeah, but we have other JPAs that take a certain amount of support to get up and going, and so is it going to be 100% standalone, or is it going to require support from the cities or?
Well, I'll just, I'll read one of the whereas's and maybe, you know, before I do that, Anita, if you have a comment, otherwise I can do my best, but my best will pale in comparison to yours.
Well, I was just going to state that when you're talking about joint powers agreements, you can create a separate independent authority, which is what's happening here, or you can just enter into a joint powers agreement. Now, this is going to be creating the authority, and that authority has separate legal standing. However, your points are well taken with regard to who's going to be handling the administration, because there are administration functions, there are auditing requirements, there are reports to the state. And so Lars may be able to speak to the particulars of that in the agreement, but there will be obligations in the membership. Once a board is convened, it's going to have to make certain determinations as to how those things are going to be handled. There are references to holding regular meetings and special meetings, and the Secretary of the Authority is going to be keeping the minutes, et cetera, names the officers, which of course is expected, you're going to have officers for this. But exactly who's going to be keeping the records and how that's going to be done, I would think that perhaps as drafter of the agreement, you may be able to speak to what's contemplated there.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. I wasn't envisioning the administrative part, but that certainly does fall on staff for the time being, and while it's not written in the communications with the two cities and the county, it was a bit of a shared, you know, a shared responsibility if that's a potential, but there is nothing hard and fast written to that effect.
Yeah, I would just add that, you know, the JPA board would start making decisions based on how that did look. On some of the costs that we've shared related to the feasibility work and also the legal work to put together the JPA, we've developed a cost sharing agreement that we've kind of used regularly, and I assume if the JPA board was interested in hiring a staff person, you know, we would follow that same sort of cost sharing. Otherwise, I've been volunteering my time, so has Lars, so has Alan, so has City Manager Kevin Ingram, and we fully anticipate continuing to provide staff level assistance to that board to help things move.
I would recommend that at the point when there is a fully constituted board, that there be something in writing that clarifies exactly, because everyone volunteering their time is terrific, and hopefully that can work out, but it's going to have to be a coordinated effort in order to be. coordinated effort in order to be effective. Otherwise, it'll just be several different people doing the same thing.
Right, and coordinated and sustainable.
And that's the word that I was just about to say, is I'm just looking for sustainability to ensure that when you are all gone, that there's something set in place. And it's not that we have a structure. And it would be nice if, once that structure has been created, on who's holding the finances, who's reviewing the finances, who's auditing and who's taking orders from the board in order to move forward, that that be written down somewhere and shared with us. So we understand if we're asking our staff to do some of that, if it's shared between all staff, or if it's a different city that's taking that on. I know, for example, the JPA for PEG, that the City of Clear Lake, instead of providing some of the funds, they give us in-kind contribution to do our finances, for example, things like that. So I just would like to know what that looks like to ensure that it's a strong start that can continue into the future.
And I appreciate that. And what I would recommend or offer is that in the current schedule that's proposed for the JPA and ultimately even a community facilities district and the polling associated with it is one of the first steps, is the bylaws at the JPA. And I think that would be an opportunity. But I'll carry this back to the staff at the three jurisdictions to ensure that they hear that as well.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Green?
Yeah, thanks. Broadly supportive, but also concerned. I know that the genesis of this JPA stems from the long-running effort to study our recreation centers or aquatic centers. That's one effort. We just heard about a park, trail inventory and stuff like that. Hopefully will lead to a master plan of sorts, maybe at Highland Springs. I feel like we're kind of creating a push-me-pull-you here, not to use a really old reference from Dr. Doolittle days, but, you know, should we pull the trigger and create this JPA, there's either going to be this assumption going in that it is going to be focused on the facilities. And yet, we've also heard that there's any number of operations and maintenance issues going on with our existing park inventory. And I don't have any draft bylaws here to look at. And I don't know who's going to be appointed to the JPA. And I don't know what the vision is of this. But I want to acknowledge, if only because I don't know where this would go, you know, honestly, because we're not giving it any direction. So it seems to be, on the one hand, there's this big, all-hands-on-deck push to move toward to these recreational facilities, possibly with a request to the voters for some supplemental funding through a tax measure. And this broader need to identify where we're at with our existing county parks and whatever facilities, operations and maintenance for existing facilities, and if there's opportunities for new facilities in those same parks. So I don't want to be like poo-pooing the recreational and aquatic facilities, but also don't want to like ignore the broader vision, which is our park system, which probably needs a lot of TLC. And this JPA could be helpful in that regard, but not if the JPA internally has this own kind of mindset that we're going to focus on these recreation centers first. So to the extent the cities have weighed this same thing when they signed on to the JPA, did they sign up for a truly county-wide recreation agency? Or did they sign on for a JPA that in their minds is focused on the facilities that we talked about?
Well, I'll be upfront and honest. The genesis of what started this was, what I referenced earlier, was a pool. I mean, that's how this started. And it has expanded quite a bit. And that's why a JPA is even envisioned. If it was a pool in one location, I don't think we would be talking about a JPA. But the notion of the two incorporated cities in Lake County, and then expanding that to consideration of facilities outside of the incorporated city. And that, the JPA, the agreement itself, is not inclusive of those two facilities. It references recreation facilities in Lake County. It doesn't say exactly what it will be. But the intent with having your board members as two members there at the JPA level, that's the opportunity to identify what are the facilities that we want to have under this JPA, as opposed to what facilities should stay at the county level. That's a consideration that I think is important to understand. To me, is I need to know at the public services level, what parks and trails and recreation programs would be, stay with the county? And what might your board be interested in having handled through the JPA? There isn't an answer of what, above and beyond the two, the aquatic center and the recreation center, there's no answer as to what additionally might be included in this JPA. But the vision is certainly that it is not limited to those two.
Yeah, and I would just add, obviously can't speak for the City of Clear Lake. However, this isn't the first time we've brought this item in front of elected officials. And we've heard the board's, you know, I don't want to say concern, but desire to have facilities outside of the incorporated areas, right? I mean, that's been heard loud and clear. And I think that we've gotten this far because, at least the City of Lake Board, and I believe the City of Clear Lake, understand that that is the bigger vision. I would also add that the reason, you know, one of the reasons why Parks and Rec is at the state as it is, not in the county, in the collective county, including the incorporated cities, is because none of us have been able to do it by ourselves, right? And so this is the first time where we're saying, well, let's get together, right? Let's improve Parks and Rec in the county together. And so I think, you know, this is the first step to seeing where that goes.
Supervisor Spatier?
And Mr. Walker stole some of my thunder in my comment. But yeah, exactly. We've talked about the North Shore. We want to make sure, look to see what's available, what can we do over there? Because we don't want to create things that are too far out of reach. We talked about it in our master plan presentation about access. So that was the concern brought up, and that was something that we're looking at. And I believe that even those involved in creating the JPA have agreed that that's going to be an important aspect to look into. I know we've also talked about maybe like facilities that already exist, like adding the Middletown Pool into the JPA to ensure that sustainability and longevity of those types of facilities. So I think that we are looking at the bigger picture. And I think it is about time that we all work together to build the things that we have not been able to build, because we're looking bigger. We're trying to reach a little further.
And I appreciate your, I wasn't going to go so far as to mention Middletown Pool, for example. But both of the facilities that we're talking about building, they require staffing to operate it on an ongoing basis, not just maintenance staff going around. But, you know, a potential way of looking at this are facilities that do require, you know, a lifeguard, a, you know, someone at the front desk, you know, those are the type of facilities that I think are envisioned under this JPA. But it's certainly not limited to that. That's just a way that I've been looking at this.
Okay. I'm going to open it up to the public. If there's anyone in the room that would like to comment on this item or in the Zoom room. Not seeing any hands, not seeing anyone coming up. So I'll close public input and bring it back to the board.
Yeah, Madam Chair, you know, I think the overall concept of JPAs is the right way to go. Everybody's working together in the same direction. But being a part of multiple different JPAs, it is a challenge to look at, I know it's been talked about, a tax measure to help move it forward. But we all know that is a challenge. That is something that will take work to get done and put through in the right way. So obviously, being part of the Lake County Risk Reduction Authority, the JPA, glad to have both cities, the tribes, everybody on there. But the funding is always a challenge to make it sustainable. You know, also a part of the Workforce Alliance in North Bay that the counties are a part of, or the county is a part of, myself and Chair Peiska sat on that board. When I first came on board, it was a JPA that was handled, the administration part was handled by NAPA in the beginning. Three years ago, we made a change as a board to be a, I think it's a 501(c)(3) to bring on the employees directly onto the JPA. That was a big lift. We were able to get that completed. But there's a lot of funding that comes through for workforce development and other things from state and federal level to help support that. So just want to really make sure that you guys are hearing and listening about, you know, that sustainability, sustainability part of the JPA is a challenge. Even with our abandoned vehicle abatement program, which we do get funds back from the state of California for abandoned vehicles, it's only a dollar per registration. So it's a challenge every year. We've taken a few years since we've gotten back to make sure that we have enough money for the budgets on a biannual basis and continuing to move that forward. But that is station two in our community development department. So there is an administrative cost that the county bears on that, too. So in favor of it, but it is a big lift. And we're currently just trying to get our feet under the Lake County Risk Reduction Authority, which has come a long ways. But we also went out to our directors and others to look to see if they would contribute, have some skin in the game, too. So it is a challenge. Advantage structured the right way is really important. And if you remember when we created the Lake County Risk Reduction Authority, there was also an ordinance being created. It was, there was kind of two things going on at once, you know. But we have the JPA now, and we're going to continue to try and grow that. And, you know, just be prepared for it, Lars. That's all I can say. We're here to support where we can. But I just want to make it very clear, Michael, when this JPA is formed, that executive board, what are the two board members are going to sit on there from here, you know, it is an independent board. You know, the Board of Supervisors won't say, this is what you guys are going to do. This is what we recommend. But the JPA, the directors on that board, it's an independent, you know, joint powers agreement. You know, they're going to make their own decisions. So, all right. That's all I have.
If there's no further comments, I offer the resolution.
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Green?
Aye.
And Supervisor Peiska?
Yes.
Thanks.
Thank you. And if I could come back to get some, maybe some direction from administration, I apologize for this, the appointment of members, I assume that would be at a later date.
Yes, we could bring him back next week if you're prepared to do so.
Yep, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Do you want to stay here?
I'm happy to.
Okay.